Welcome to the Town of Richmond Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 6th, 2023. We do have a quorum, so we are good to go. So, welcome to our guests. It looks like we have a few guests and along with our four meetings. That's great. So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to review and look at the agenda and see if we want to make any changes to it. The agenda that was posted was the draft agenda. So today, we replaced the draft agenda. Keith was away on vacation, so it didn't get replaced with the final agenda. Luckily, the same topics are on it, but they're in a different order. So we're going to follow the order of the final agenda that is currently online, where the first, under number five, when we're talking about Act 47, we're going to talk about the village residents, as we had promised, that we were going to have three introductory sessions. And this is the third of the introductory sessions to Act 47. So that's going to be first. That was formally C. Then we're going to go through the rest of that list as is posted at the moment. So if anyone has any adjustments or changes they want to make to that, seeing none, hearing none, we'll go with that agenda as currently posted. And does anyone have any comments they would like to make on items not on this agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We'll quickly look at our minutes of the 8/16/23 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, changes that anybody would like to make to those minutes?
No, we're good.
Okay, hearing none, we will accept those minutes into the record as written and move on to our actual agenda. Number five, which is a continuation of our Act 47 work session. So hopefully everyone by this point knows Act 47 is what used to be called S-100. It's the Home, H-O-M-E, Act, Housing Opportunities Made for Everyone Home. So, and it's all about housing. And we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the main changes that we're going to have to make to our zoning regulation to comply with this new law. And we're going to talk about the village residential neighborhoods in particular because Act 47 relates to zoning districts that are served by municipal water and sewer and that allow permanent residential uses, that allow housing. So those are the main municipal zoning districts that are affected. There are lots of other sections to this law that relate to Act 250 and some other things. We're not going to be concerned with them tonight. We're going to be concerned with the zoning changes that we're going to have to make to comply with the municipal zoning section of it. So there are really two main points that everybody's going to be interested in. And I mentioned these in the Front Porch Forum post and also in the meeting memo that's posted with our meeting materials. The first one has to do with the fact that this law requires that a permitted use in the districts that I just described has to be multi-unit housing with, that's three to four unit housing. So this is not something that in our earlier discussions with the Neighborhood North and the Neighborhood South, this is not something that we had discussed, including, we had talked about single-family houses and duplexes. And we had not talked, or we had specifically talked about not including multifamily buildings with three to four units. But this law requires that this be added as a permitted use. So the changes that we're going to have to make into both these residential neighborhood districts are, in the list of permitted uses, we will have to add dwellings with three to four units. That will be a permitted use. And there are also a few other statements, such as in the features, where we say this is a residential district, including single-family and duplexes. We will also have to add the words "and" three to four unit homes required by this new statute. So are there any questions about this? Or anything anybody would like to say about this from the neighborhoods? I see Christie's here from the north, Residential Neighborhood Kathleen's here from the south. This guy with the rabbit ears, John Paul Lavoy, is that you, John Paul Lavoy with the rabbit ears? Anyway, somebody is coming in under that Zoom label from one of the neighborhoods. Oh, hello, there, no rabbit ears.
Yes, that was in fact me with rabbit ears. I do live right on West Main Street on the south side.
Okay, West Main Street on the south side, all right. And do you have any questions about this? Or, you know, it's kind of, we're not really asking you whether you want to have this in the zoning or not, because it's required by this statute now that it be included in the zoning. But if you want to have anything to say about it, this is a good time to state your position on it.
Yeah, I'm more here just out of curiosity to try to be aware of what the changes do involve really at this point.
Yep, okay, great. Christie, I know, you know, this is not, you are not, have not been a fan of this, but...
Oh, hi.
Hello.
Let me start my video. Yeah, no, I think when it was still proposed, I emailed Keith with the five, minimum of five units per acre. So if we have five units per acre, I mean, I think we should just adopt exactly what the legislature enacted.
Yes.
You know, keeping the square, like exactly their language. And I think that's like probably the cleanest and simplest way to do it. So I don't have any issues with that.
Yep, so we will get to the five units per acre. That's the other main point that people are going to be concerned about. The first one is the three to four unit buildings being a permitted use.
Yeah.
We're just going to have to put it into the statute pretty much as is.
I think we just take everything that's, that they, they put and, you know, use square, the square footage, like divided by acreage per unit, so not like the 10,000 square feet, like make it the acreage divisible numbers. And, you know, just like what the legislator, legislature proposed, I think is really good. I was trying to look back on the meeting minutes from last time and I did, you know, want to clarify about the minimum parking requirements for duplexes and multifamily houses, because there is that exemption if the multi-unit homes are more than a quarter of an acre away from public parking, which most of the north neighborhood is. So just making sure that that's also included in our regulations for parking maximums.
Yep, so we will get to that in a minute. If anybody else wants to have any comments about the three to four multi-unit buildings.
No comments on that, thank you.
Okay, Kathleen, yep, great. And Gary was here from the south neighborhood, but anyway. All right, so that's what language will be introduced, is that these three to four unit buildings are going to be permitted and that we're going to have residential districts that include them, basically. To get to the parking piece, which is also included in that section that relates to the municipal zoning. The language that was written in the statute is ambiguous about whether or not, as Christie was mentioning, the exemption for residences that are more than a quarter of a mile away from public parking are allowed to have 1.5 units as a baseline requirement for parking. We asked our attorney what his feeling was about this. His feeling is that the first statement in this subsection, which I will read to you, is the ruling parameter. The first section says, the first, the first sentence in this section says, "In any district that is served by municipal sewer and water infrastructure that allows residential uses, a municipality shall not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit, period." The exemption that Christie was talking about occurs in the next sentence, which is prefaced by the words, "However, a municipality may require 1.5 parking spaces for duplexes and multi-unit dwellings in areas not served by water and sewer and in areas that are located more than one quarter mile from public parking." The grammar and the punctuation does not support either interpretation, either the interpretation that it applies to residential uses in the water and sewer areas, or whether it only applies to residential uses in the areas not served by water and sewer. And our attorney's opinion was that the first sentence dominates and that that means that the second sentence cannot apply to residences that are in water and sewer. Now, myself, I have some problems with that interpretation, however, it is his interpretation. I have posted, so the Agency of Commerce and Community Development has sent out some guidance, some guidelines about this. Provisional, they are going to make a final copy of their guidelines and we assume that they have lawyers also that they are talking to. The Agency of Commerce and Community Development was behind a lot of this, these ideas that are in this law. So they have worked on it a lot. They did not answer that particular question yet, but I have submitted a question and I hope other people have submitted a question about that, because the way it's written to me suggests that that would also apply to areas in the water and sewer district. And furthermore, that there's no reason for them to say anything about what we can allow in areas without water and sewer, because this whole law is only about areas in water and sewer. So the second statement is completely irrelevant to anything that's in this. So Christie, in answer to your question, this is unresolved, this issue right now about parking. And if the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, ACCD, comes back with a different interpretation than the lawyer, then we will have to decide what to do at that point. But, so that's unresolved. Either all the dwellings will have a floor of one unit only required. They can put more if they want, but that's the maximum that you can require. Or it will be 1.5. So it's either going to be one or 1.5. And we will have to wait a little bit and see if we can completely resolve that issue. Because I completely understand your concern and I'm kind of on that page. I think, you know, it's, it's an example of a comma and the way you write a sentence being super important in what the, you know, in what it means. So that's the answer about the parking. We do have a definition, we are suggesting as a definition of public parking, that public parking is any demarcated parking spot that is available to the public, indoor or outdoor, for a fee or not for a fee. So if there is any on-street parking that is demarcated, and maybe we need to be more specific about that, because I see they have kind of demarcated the parking outside the Catholic Church with just a white line, but there are no little cross lines. So, you know, is that demarcated or not? It looks like it's supposed to be for parking? And maybe if they put little boxes on it, it would be actually demarcated? And so some of your neighborhood is going to be within a quarter of mile of that parking?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, getting to like the point of this and logistics, I think that the intent is that there's public parking for the residents. You know, they have a place to park their car. And there may be one spot available in front of the Catholic Church and there may be, I don't know, a couple spots in front of or in back of Green Sea. But those are highly coveted spots. And if residents start using them as their parking places, that's going to be a challenge. I know that we, for the Main Street tenants, we created the Depot Street Lots and, you know, went through that whole process of, you know, how to allocate spots for different residents. And I don't remember where that is right now, but, but parking for tenants is a big issue. And so I think it is important to clarify where tenants should be parking if we're allowing one parking spot per unit, or even 1.5 parking spots per unit. I have a duplex right next to me that has two units and has six cars. So if that duplex had two spots for cars, they need to find four places for their additional cars. So the Catholic Church, Catholic Church isn't going to meet that need. Green Sea's not going to want them parking behind there. So I think that really we need to look at like, not creating a problem, but looking at what's the intent of having public parking available if we limit parking spaces in the residential areas.
So what would you suggest?
I would say that...
Is it in the definition of public parking that you would like to see something else? I mean, it's either going to be one or 1.5, which...
Yeah, so I would say, you know, municipal parking, like identify those areas. Like we, whatever we looked at, like Depot Street, the Town Center, like those are places where we, you know, establish larger areas of parking and have some control over, you know, plowing those areas, because a lot of places, you can't park overnight because they have to be plowed. So like, they're more managed and so there, it's more predictable for residents. So something like that, where we're identifying those areas. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in statute, it could, in our ordinance, it could be, you know, identified, you know, Richmond parking areas and then those are identified somewhere else. I'll let Kathleen talk because she may have an idea about this.
Okay, yep.
What I, what I was thinking was the definition of public parking, there should be an additional clause that says for throughout the year or not, you know, in the, because in the winter, not all the spaces are available on the street. So as Christie was saying, have it very clear that it, that these are not just seasonal spaces, that these would have to be available year-round. So on the street parking, it's available year-round.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, you know, we could certainly put that in there. Now bear in mind that there is nothing currently in our parking ordinance that requires that. And for commercial, you know, for commercial users that go through the DRB, presumably, you know, they have their own set of numbers of spaces needed for each business. We did alter the parking table with the RC districts. There are places in the village downtown area that aren't required to have any parking spaces. So, you know, this would be a new thing that we're adding, which is, I mean, we can try to identify the ones that we already have, the parking areas that we, the public parking areas that we already have. If we say, you know, if we put in our definition of public parking, it has to be 24 hours and it has to be in winter. I mean, those are good things to add, but it doesn't really help us to have more parking, you know? Are we going to, say we have, we put in a parking, in our parking section, we have a list of the public parking areas, Depot Street, Town Center. What else? You know, I mean, does that actually help us to put those cars somewhere? You know what I mean?
I think it acknowledges that, I mean, I think it acknowledges that, you know, with the, the limits of one or 1.5 parking spots per new units, I think that, you know, we have to have parking to accommodate, because I don't know, you know, where are those four cars going to go that are next door to me? I don't, right? Like where are they going to go?
Yeah, where are they going to go? I mean, where are they going to go right now? Where, where are they going? Where are they going right now?
They're all boxed in. They park on their lot or they park on the street. In the winter, they get, you know, flagged for not parking on the street. But you know, I think, we should set up something if, when we do this, I mean, just to, for like proper planning of what we anticipate, what we expect and how we can, you know, not create conflicts for new tenants.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I agree, this is a good thing. We have not had this before, even though there are already conflicts, you know what I mean? So maybe going forward.
Something, what, Kathleen, do you remember what it was? Where we, with the residential units in Main Street and some sort of parking pass or something?
What it says in the ordinance right now for those downtown properties that are not required to have parking is if you're going to have a development, you have to have an arrangement. You have to make an arrangement with someone else that this is where you're going to park. And I don't know frankly whether it's worked or not. We'd have to talk to Pete, I guess, to find out if that is adequate. It was, you know, it's kind of dependent on there being some places otherwise in the town that people could park. Like they are not allowed to have permanent use of municipal spots. They're not allowed to reserve permanent use of municipal spots. So they have to make some kind of arrangement with somebody else. So, you know, from a planning point of view, that's kind of A. It's kind of like, all right, well, if we want businesses downtown, that was the compromise that was made, because there is no room, you know, there wouldn't be any businesses. They wouldn't be allowed to have businesses, because there's no room for parking basically there, so.
I guess Kathleen, just wanted to, since there is this new definition for public parking, I think the definition should be as clear as possible to reflect the fact that they would have to have year-round ability to park there, so.
Yes, well, we could certainly put that in. It doesn't create any additional parking by putting it in. And it, you know, maybe what has to happen is there has to be agitation for parking to be created, I don't know, towards the Planning Commission? Keith, are you hearing? Or this lack board or somebody, you know? This has always been a problem in Richmond. And this is, this statute, which we're required to implement, is likely to make it worse until people stop having so many cars, until people have less cars, which is sometime in our electric future, but anyway, until that point.
Irrespective of anything, it, it, it really has to do with the areas that are served by water and sewer. And per the statute, you can't allow more than one if those areas are served by water and sewer. That's just the way it has to be written. Any, any developer worth their salt is going to know they're going to have to supply parking for these tenants at some point or another, but I can't force them to do that. So that's the conundrum we're going to have administratively, there's no doubt about that. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be a royal pain.
Yeah, well, I mean theoretically, they're going to have to have parking on their lot. So, so, so we may have to adjust the lot coverage number. Like your tenants, Christie, is there room on their lot that a little parking area could be created? Or is there not room?
Well, that's what they do. There's like a driveway and they pack six cars in. And I think it's same for the lot that abuts, that's Baker and Main Street. You know, there, it's a, the house frontage is just the driveway and there are six cars parked there, so.
Is there room to have more parking area on the lot?
No, it's like maxed out.
Okay, so, I mean, maxed out in terms of coverage or there actually isn't any more space? If it's pre-existing, obviously it's grandfathered without, you know, because that district has had 50 or 60, 40, 30 or 40% lot coverage as a requirement for new development, but maybe the old development, obviously.
No, I'm sure it's, it's all grandfathered, but yeah, lot coverage. I mean, they're, they're pretty maxed out in lot coverage with the house.
Six vehicles with, on it with a duplex?
Yes, two of them.
That, that's kind of the exception and not the rule, but nevertheless.
But I think the issue is that, you know, housing is so expensive that multiple people are sharing. So you have a couple sharing one room and another roommate sharing another. And so that's three cars, you know, and people are moving to Richmond. Yes, it's walkable, but people have mountain bikes and toys and like to go places, so, or work. So that's three cars per unit. I mean, that's just like, yeah, I would like it to be different, but that's the way it is.
And do they have grass? Do they have any grass or?
Yeah, there's like a little front yard on my neighbors.
Yep, just a little front yard, no backyard, no other?
No, like we're pretty dense here, so. I don't know, I mean, I think it's just something to be cognizant of. I'm sure that tenants could say, yeah, you can park on the street. And then in the winter, if it snows, just, you know, find some other place and then you can come back. I mean, I think that's what a tenant would, or a landlord would say.
Right.
So I just want to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, I just see this whole, whole approach when, when people come in for, for permits. And I look at this administratively, is that we're going to have to have that conversation. We're going to have to say, okay, if you have a duplex, you, you, one just might not be enough for each unit. You, you might have to, you know, deal with two. And they, and they're allowed to do that, but I can't force them to do that. So you have to see how this evolves.
Certainly not going to require three spaces per, you know, even though some people now have three spaces.
Right, and I think that's where like the, you know, my, my interpretation of this is definitely the 1.5 parking spaces if you're more than a quarter away for public parking. I think that was the intent and we'll get clarification on that, but assuming that's, that's the, the intent. You know, that would mean that there would be three parking spaces at my neighbors. And then they just need to find spots for three cars.
Yes. Yeah, that would be my interpretation too, no doubt. But I mean, but, but what you are is, is served by water and sewer, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, one spaces is, is the floor.
Well, I think it's 1.5, but that's okay, we'll get clarification.
We, we've had the clarification from our lawyer, that's where Keith is coming from. And we just want a little further clarification.
Yeah.
You know, we may, uh, the, decide that we have to go with the lawyer, or we may decide to go with ACCD if they have a different interpretation. If we have our own interpretation, we're hanging out there, so, you know, the zoning administrator may not. Work that way, but we will attempt to clarify this as best as possible. And. Definitely, we can put in for the public parking, that there has to be some public parking that's available twenty-four hours a day, and some public parking that is available. At night, if.
Those unintended consequences.
Alright, any more comments about that, or the parking, the parking issue, or the three to four unit building? One thing that we will have to also put in the neighborhoods is the multifamily. Development, multifamily housing development standards, which is a section that we added. For the RC districts, the Village RC and the Gateway. We added that because our housing consultant had told us that this three to four. Multi-unit building was coming down the pike, so, we put that in already in those districts. And to help to ensure that they're good neighbors. We developed a set of standards, development standards. That we felt was a compromise between what the housing people wanted, which was none of that, because it inhibited housing. Having standards, and our feeling that we wanted neighbors to be. You know, protected and feel comfortable and enjoy having neighbors that were three to four unit buildings. So, we put in a set of standards, which are currently in, they've been adopted with the RC districts. They would apply to the neighborhoods as well, the standards. And the, you know, the multifamily housing standards are just like, you have to have screening, you have to have some outside space, you have, you know, there's a few things that you have to have. You can't have dumpsters standing around in the front yard and. Anyway. Yeah, yeah. You can read, read the standards, and this would be for, um, you know. Any newly developed multi-housing standard, mu- multi-housing buildings.
So, I, I think at this point, as far as the parking goes, I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna wait until that settles out, um, and then if they are desperate. Or disparate, um, we're gonna make that decision, um, that, that's what I'm getting.
Yes. Yep. Okay, otherwise, three to four units are in, so. Anybody else wanna say anything on the planning commission or neighbors? It's fairly straightforward, we have to do it, so that's what we're gonna do. Alright, so we'll move on to the second point, that is the most. Controversial, perhaps you might say, which is that in any district, served by water and sewer. Which allows year-round residential use, you have to. Write your regulations such that a density of five. Units per acre. Or one unit every eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet is allowed. Now, it does not say. That you have to write in a residential density cap. Of five units per acre. All it says is you have to write your regulations such that. Five units per acre is allowed, which means that you must have as your minimum lot size. A fifth of an acre. And so far. What we had in our previous conversations with these two neighborhoods had determined. Was that it was gonna be ten thousand square feet, minimum lot size, that's about a quarter of an acre in the north. And twenty thousand square feet, that's about half an acre in the south district. And the reason those two are different is because. The neighborhood in the south is coming from a, one dwelling per unit. Essentially, that density, in the north, they're coming from a higher density to begin with, in the HDR. So, anyway. That is what we would be proposing to write into the regulations for the minimum lot size. And the reason that you have to have a minimum lot size of a fifth of an acre. Is because if somebody wants to build a single-family home. You have to allow a density of five units per acre, which means that all they need is a fifth of an acre to put that single-family home on. If you wanna put a bigger number of dwelling units. Like a duplex or a multifamily unit building. You have to have more than a fifth of an acre, obviously, because you have a fifth of an acre. For each dwelling unit. The Agency of Commerce and Community Development, ACCD. Recommends. That all density caps be removed. Because in their eyes, this is the thing that will allow more housing to be built, is not having any density caps. You have a minimum, you have to allow five units per acre, but there's no maximum. So, we are thinking that that is not going to be very popular. To allow you to have any amount of density. So, we are suggesting that we put a cap on the density of five units per acre. That's the floor, and it's also the top. So, it's, seems a little complicated to explain, but I'm hoping that I'm getting the point across. It doesn't mean that all we have to do is to write in a density number, five units per acre. It requires that we change the minimum lot size to a fifth of an acre for each unit. Is that clear, or?
I don't know, but I think, I think that's, I think that's the right, it sounds like that's the right intent. I don't know about the minimum lot sizes, cause I haven't contemplated that yet, but, like, I think that the five units per acre, I think, is. As the cap, I think that's great. And I think that that kind of fits with a lot of, you know, at least what's in the residential north district. But then thinking about like, lot size, minimum lot sizes, I think that. Some, most of our lots are bigger than. That point two acres, it's like point two seven.
Quite a few less than point two also, in the one point eight, one point seven. So, there's quite a few that are there, but they're all grandfathered, that, there's no changes there.
But what about like if somebody wants to put on a porch or something, and it's a non-conforming? Lot, does that make any difference, or if? Okay. I think I heard you say no.
Yeah, not, not with that, but we're not dealing with that, we're dealing with density on this and not with dimensional issues.
Yeah, that's another thing that we are. Putting in this density section that we're working on to explain the concept. Is that density is not a dimensional requirement. Unfortunately, in the RC districts, we put density under the dimensional requirements, that is not. Correct, as it turns out, and we will have to remove it and make it a freestanding section in each district. The resident, the maximum residential density will be a separate subsection that is not a dimensional standard. But, the way that Act forty-seven is written. Says, you have to write bylaws that allow for a five-unit-per-acre density. They don't say you have to have a five-unit-per-acre density, because they want you not to have any maximum density.
Right.
But in order to allow. Four, five units per acre, you would have to allow a single-family home to be built on point two acres. So that means your minimum lot size is going to have to be a fifth of an acre.
That makes sense.
So, that is a dimensional standard, the minimum lot size is a dimensional standard, it is going to have to be changed. It's not that different for the north neighborhood, because yours was already a quarter of an acre, as the men, you know. For the minimum lot size.
Yeah, many are non-conforming now, yeah, okay, that's fine.
So, it's more of a change for the people in the south neighborhood. Um, because they were going from a minimum lot size of a half an acre, and now they're going down to a fifth of an acre. And that neighborhood to us has different characteristics from the north neighborhood, so that's why we're still keeping them separate. But they will also, because they're served by water and sewer and allow year-round residential use, they will also have to comply. By having a minimum lot size of a fifth of an acre, Kathleen?
Thanks, I, I was just, I just wanna, uh. Support your statement that this is gonna be a big change for the south. Village neighborhood, and by allowing, uh, we're, we're having the maximum, both the minimum be one. Fifth of an acre and the maximum be one fifth, five, well, I mean, it's. That, I think, really makes sense for us in Richmond, this, the size of Richmond. This law is for all municipalities with water and sewer, we do not have. The, the same scale of. Development potential, and our neighborhood. Our neighborhoods are quite different from neighborhoods in Burlington and South Burlington. Where you're looking to have greater density, so I think it's really appropriate to have both. The minimum to reflect what's required in the state law, and to set a maximum, we are, we can set the maximum, there's no prohibition against it. But I think it's, I think it's really appropriate for us.
Okay, um, anybody else? Mark, do you have anything you wanna add, or Adam, or Allison?
I guess the only thing that strikes me is that, uh. Everything I hear about setting the density is, uh, important, and I think we don't wanna change the character of the neighborhoods unduly. But it seems like we're, uh, doing exactly what this law was seeking to. Had to undo over the last decades, which is doing the absolute bare minimum to encourage housing development, so while I understand we don't wanna change the neighborhoods. And I understand that, you know, if that was happening in my neighborhood, or it could potentially. It just kinda doesn't sit great with me that we're trying to do like the absolute bare minimum. Um, in every way, I just, you know, I know multiple people who have moved out of state, I know family members who, uh, have moved back in with. Parents because they have two full-time jobs, uh, both in the public sector and don't have houses, and so. Doing the bare minimum is what got us here, and we're just gonna keep doing that, I don't see that being a solution. Same time, I understand that we need to balance that against. Completely upending all our zoning and development standards, so, um, I haven't reconciled those two things in my head, but I. I just, uh, I think. If we go into this with the mentality of, uh. Of adopting every standard specifically in the most restrictive way allowed. That we have kind of done ourselves in our community disservice, that maybe we need to contemplate each one specifically, cause there are some of them that we could probably go. Above and beyond on, and others that we definitely wanna adopt in the most restrictive way permitted. I don't know what that looks like, I just kind of see the trend of. Um, everyone being adopted. As restrictive as possible, so. Um, I will put more thought into what that looks like, which specific ones, I think that there is room for. Richmond to do above and beyond, and which ones I think that we should really, uh, we're just not cut out for, so. Not quite there yet.
Well, I mean, you're not the only one, this is extremely difficult, and on the housing committee, we wrestled with this in terms of. You know, using open space for housing, I mean, housing is a goal, open space is a goal.
Contradictory to our conservation goals too, right, or not, fundamentally, but. People living in Richmond is contradictory to our conservation goals, so it is a, an odd conundrum.
Yep, there, there are many kind of intractable problems, so welcome, welcome to the world of the intractable. Contradictions that you hold in your mind at the same time, Christie.
Yeah, I'd like to respectfully disagree with, with Adam, um, I think that the legislature worked really hard on this. All session, and, um, we are enacting what they came up with. And, um, you know, there was lots of input and back and forth on what these standards should be, so I think that. It is appropriate for my neighborhood, I know you've been to my neighborhood, and. Um, it's very dense, and I think that the legislature enacted this, because this is what we want in our downtowns. And a lot of downtowns with water and sewer don't have the density that my neighborhood has, so I think that it is. You know, representative of what the state is looking for in these areas, and it does work, it's extremely dense. And, um, I think it's appropriate for a village, you know, residential neighborhood. We have gone above and beyond in the village, um, residential, the new district, the. Residential commercial district, that is more dense than what is, what the legislature is requiring, so. Um, I think it's a, it's a misstatement to say that we're doing the bare minimum, I think we are going above and beyond, and I think that we're enacting what. The legislature has worked hard to establish as what a dense downtown neighborhood looks like. Thank you.
Allison.
Yeah, I guess, uh, it's easy to, oh, sorry, Allison.
Go ahead, Adam, if you wanna respond to that.
Yeah, I know, I, I, yeah, I don't disagree, I guess it's easy to, here, let me turn my, uh. Yeah, I think it's easy to, yeah, look at only Richmond too, and not realize that there are places with town water and sewer that are obviously significantly less dense than Richmond is. So that might be, uh, more of a shock for them, but also more room for growth. So I, yeah, I do understand it's obviously not enough to like put up skyscrapers and stuff, we're not gonna solve the housing crisis, we need to make it work with our community. Yeah, I guess I just need to contemplate it more, so.
Yep, and the legislature did not require that we don't have any density caps. You know, they allowed, I think, for that to be a need, and for that to be appropriate, so. Um, Allison?
Yes, thank you, Virginia, um, I've been listening to all these, uh, thoughts, all of which I respect and have sympathy for. Um, the legislature did this. Uh, before we had this summer of floods. And my concern is that, uh, the floods have in fact changed things a great deal. I don't know if anybody's been to Montpelier lately, but it's quite shocking, and even in Barry. Um, I grew up in Montpelier, so I have some real feelings about that community. Um, I think that in their efforts to try to maximize opportunities for people in village areas. That they overlooked a few things, for one thing, the road infrastructure, and now at this point, um. I think that what has happened with so many floods. And property damage and basement damage and, and, uh, real serious difficulties. Some of which I've seen at my swimming pool this summer, a lot of people whose properties were affected by the floods came to the swimming pool. And I heard a lot of stories about, uh, you know, horror stories about houses that, that are unusable now. Um, I don't think this is the time to increase the density in the village. I just don't think it is, and I respect the fact that the legislature made this law, but, um. Uh, my concern is that recent events have indicated that maybe this isn't the best way to go. I'm not gonna buck it or vote against it or anything, because I know we're all trying to comply with what we see as the law being told to us. But it wouldn't surprise me a bit if this law were changed in the next session.
Okay, but in the meantime, you're okay with us doing what the law says?
Well, I, I don't think we have a choice, but I don't, I don't think that it was well-conceived. To start with, uh, and that some important things were overlooked. And that now some of those important things have become even more flagrantly obvious. Uh, that's just my comment, I don't think that's very useful for what we're doing tonight, but I just wanna express that as my concern, that's all.
Yes, well, we, we will see how it all turns out, huh?
Yeah.
In the future, Christie.
Yeah, Allison, I just really wanted to thank you for that comment, um, you know, I. Yeah, Allison, I just really wanted to thank you for that comment. Um, you know, I, I'm supportive of of these regulations because they don't really change much in my neighborhood. I see it as, you know, good development, but um, it is interesting to think about flooding because um with these really intense um rainstorms that we're having, we're getting flooding in areas that aren't in the flood hazard overlay district. So my house flooded during the flood events. I had storms, sewers running through my backyard into my garage, into my basement. And it was devastating. So now I have a, a berm and a ditch and we're trying to figure out with the town how to fix that. And all my neighbors showed up and you know, helped to shop back and keep water from filling up in my basement. It was traumatic and it's happened multiple times. And so when we think about more density in the village, more impervious surface, or even putting these houses in harm's way, if I was to put another, if I was to put an accessory dwelling unit in my backyard, it would be the first to flood. And, and that's, that's hard. Um, I don't think there's anything that that we can do about that, but I think acknowledging that is, is, it's really appreciated. So thank you, Allison.
Well, just go to Montpelier. Go, go to Montpelier and look around. If you haven't. I mean, thank you, Christie, but that's, that's my comment. I, I, like I said, I grew up there and uh my father worked for the state. Uh, we used to go down, you know, you used to be able to walk down to the state house and you could get your license plate and uh file for this, that, or whatever, you know, within walking distance and all those offices now are dispersed all over the town and up the hills and everything. I think this has been a profound change and uh maybe the best thing that we could do right now is nothing.
Yeah, well, I mean, it probably is going to cause us to rethink our stormwater system.
Absolutely.
Because
Right.
If our stormwater system has previously depended on there being enough permeable surfaces to absorb the water and we're going to have more water in shorter periods of time, you know, we're going to have to rethink our stormwater system. If we're going to have greater density, for sure, there's going to have to be a different stormwater management system that takes these things in. And, you know, it is an issue. I, I certainly agree that that's an issue.
I know that's not very helpful for your progress, Virginia, but I'm just being, I'm just being bluntly honest and, and saying this is a major concern.
Yep.
We have people in our town who have lost their homes.
Yep.
You know, it, it certainly inconvenienced me greatly with the swimming business, but I still have a house.
Right. Of course, there are many people who don't have homes. That's the problem with the housing is that there are many people who don't even have a home to start with. So you're between that rock and hard place of
Yes, and it's now it's worse.
Yeah, now there's even more people who don't have homes.
Yeah.
All right, well.
I'm not happy though.
Note, I think we're going to move along. We have a, we have fifteen minutes before we're going to talk about number six. So I would like to ask Adam if he can talk to us about the section of the new law that says for affordable housing. Now granted, affordable housing is going to be very difficult, possibly impossible to achieve in the water and sewer district as it's currently configured, but in the water and sewer district, affordable housing is allowed to have a forty percent density bonus, if you want to talk about more density, and is enabled by this law to increase the height one story above the current height restriction. Now, the tiny bit of background that you need to know is it's thirty-five feet right now. And the reason that it's thirty-five feet is because that's what the fire department feels like they can rescue people from. And that's what all of it has always been thirty-five feet. So can you talk a little bit about this? Adam, I know you did some work.
Sure. I did a little bit of work on it. Um, I made some bullet points and I'm using my wife's laptop, actually. I have a little uh job site laptop accident. Um, so, um there's a lot of different sources cited by both fire department and other people in town, um, you know, about where the thirty-five foot maximum came from. Um, thirty-five feet is the height of our tallest ladder. So then that seems to be a
Yeah.
An important uh number, but then, you know, the ladder doesn't have to reach the top of the building. It needs to reach the person. So how do we reconcile those two things? So um, there's also the ISO rating is often cited. Um, it's a rating given to us by uh ISO rating agency that is used to incrementally change the ta- uh uh insurance rates for homeowners and more importantly, business, businesses uh in town. There's NFPA, NFPA requirements, but those are um only apply to the apparatus in the uh response to buildings. So they're not really a clear guideline. So I guess my, my point is that there's no clear, uh, there's no clear driving number that indicates that we need to have a maximum height or that we should have a maximum height and what it should be. And uh, there are many ways to mitigate fire danger with much taller buildings, but they do require additional uh construction costs and all that. So I don't, I don't see that as being an issue. I mean, I think that with the right, fro- from the perspective of a firefighter and not the perspective of a uh commission member, I don't see, personally don't see adding to the height being an inherent life safety issue. Given that there are other um sorry, I'm going to put it, o- other criteria that are met for egress in buildings. And I think that that's the primary requirement. The, the primary concern is that egress requirements are not met, that someone is unable to escape from a building that is either on fire or in some kind of damaged situation. And so uh, we have many buildings in Vermont and nationally and everywhere um that have, you know, heights much higher than any ladder truck can ever reach. And they're actually extremely safe because the smoke detector or the fire, fire detection and fire suppression systems are very uh well thought out. And so I think that's the primary avenue to allow this while also keeping people safe would be my take on it. That's, so that's my synopsis. Um, I think we're, we're, we're required to do this. So it, it is a you know, like we've talked about all the other requirements, it's going to happen. Um, how we mitigate the risk and the impact, I think is going to be the kind of the most important. And I don't think that Richmond going out and springing for a ladder truck is going to be the most financially or um, it's not going to be, not going to be most fiscally or practically responsible. Um, we can't staff a ladder truck. We can't train on a ladder truck and we probably can't afford one. And we definitely don't have a place to put it. So there are other means that are more effective and more permanent and less fluid with the whims of the fire department.
So, um, thank you. Yes.
Yeah.
By the view of a firefighter. Yes, thank you. Um, so with that in mind, are you, would you be fi- thinking that it is acceptable to just put this item in as a freestanding bullet point in the height section, for instance? And then in an affordable housing section, given that it's pretty unlikely that we're going to have an affordable housing building because it's turning out to be very difficult to get there. Um, but we could put it as a freestanding bullet in the height section, section four point, whatever it is, twelve, I think. And then we could have a section on affordable housing, which we probably should have anyway. We have nothing in our zoning ordinance about affordable housing. So we would have a section, a short section about affordable housing that might talk about if it's higher than thirty-five feet, you have to have the correct mitigating.
Yeah, I, I would, I would go one step further. Um, I guess not one step further. Uh, I would take a different approach and I think that we should it is tough because since there is a, a housing, or since there is an affordable housing bonus that we do, we are adding, no matter what we're adding X amount stories, but the, we already have a significant number of buildings in our town that don't comply with any of the requirements in our are residentially occupied. We have new buildings that don't require, don't uh comply with these requirements. You know, the what's that, uh, Jolena Court Building does not comply. They intentionally did not comply and they blamed their engineer and then did it anyway. So I, I think that decoupling building height from a blanket statement in town and making it so that uh, I, I, I think so, I think the limiting factor is town water, town water and sewer or not, because that gives you access to readily available sprinkler water that you can then sprinkle a building in. That is a um well documented way within the fire industry or the fire protection industry to increase life safety. So I would tie, personally, I think that the maximum building height from my perspective as a firefighter, is only applicable outside of the water and sewer district or buildings that are non-sprinkled. So the minute a building is sprinkled, that building height doesn't ha- serve any practical purpose from a fire protection standpoint. If it from a, from a character of the neighborhood standpoint, that's a separate issue that we can definitely discuss. But from a fire protection standpoint, that building height is completely irrelevant once the building is sprinkled, if that makes sense.
So that would require rewriting the height section, basically.
Wasn't trying to make us uh cut up, you know, make us have a whole other section to rewrite. I apologize.
Yeah, well.
But um, yeah, I, I guess, yeah, I, I don't think we necessarily need to raise the building height. I mean, obviously the building height is also a character of the neighborhood issue and having a building all of a sudden that's a hundred feet tall in town is not something we want to do. But I think allowing that, I think that cou- coupling the added height requir- the added height over thirty-five feet to a requirement for sprinkling a building is what's important from a safety standpoint. And I believe that practically speaking, that is the case uh in a state, from a state permitting level. I mean, there unless you are permitted, unless it's a, a three, unless it was a three-unit, non-commercially occupied building, uh sprinkling would be required anyway in Vermont. So anything over three stories is inherently required to be sprinkled.
All right. So we, we will work on those sections that are affected. It um is one of those things that is required. So we're going to have to have it one way or another. There are some other issues with the way that the fire department is required to sign off on certain buildings that we also have to fix. So um, we'll, we'll need to figure out what those sections are and work on them. Um Christie?
Yeah, I think it would be useful um to look back to the Jolena Court negotiations because they definitely wanted to go above thirty-five feet, which Adam you suggested that they did, you know, illegally. Um, and
It made approved, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, but they were limited to that because of the thirty-five foot restriction. We were told that we needed to, if they wanted to put one more you, one more floor on, we would need a ladder truck. And so there was extensive research done at that point that we um had the maximum number of buildings that have exceeded the thirty-five feet in town before it changes insurance rates and um we would need a ladder truck. So that was the decision back then. So um, I think we should revisit that.
Yeah, well, I mean, part, part of that, I remember all about it because we were there writing that zoning. So that the new building that is permitted now has a low side and a high side. There's a four-story side and a three-story side and the resolution was going to be that the people were going to go who needed rescuing to the three-story side and not be on the four-story side. So who, what, you know, we don't really have a building code inspector. So nobody made sure, like if it was thirty-seven feet or thirty-nine feet or, you know, if the engineer made a calculation mistake, then you know, whatever. But so that's why it, you know, certainly looks like it exceeds it because there is a side that is four stories. But the plan was to get people out on the three-story side. Anyway.
So can, uh, can I, can I read one, one thing quick just to kind of, this is, this is what I'm, I'm going off of. So we have, there's a bunch of ISO is like an independent rating agency more for rate calculation uh for insurance rates. It's kind of uh it's not, their end goal is not to ensure safety. Their goal is to assess risk for a for, you know, fiscally, for, for companies that are making money off insurance. So it's uh correlated to our risk, but it's not directly, that's not the purpose of it. So what we normally, what I would uh refer, what I would normally revert back to would be the FBA, which is a national, national fire protection agency, that their entire goal is to um, they rewrite codes on a triannual basis to um basically address areas of identified risk or re- refine things. So there's a specific, they have a, a one sentence that addresses exactly what we're talking about. And this is kind of documented that to be a very uh effective means. So I'll just read it. Whenever a dwelling has more than two rooms, all living and sleeping areas are required to have a primary and secondary means of escape unless the room has direct access via the door leading to ground level. So any ground level uh room with a door is not required a secondary means or dwelling unit is fully protected by an automatic fire sprinkler system. So if the building is sprinkled, from NFPA standpoint, there's no reason to have a height or egress requirement. The egress requirement kind of ties into the height requirement because of how they view window height um from egress. That's where the thirty-five feet kind, I think maybe comes from. Basically, once sprinklers come into play, sprinklers are so effective at preventing uh uncontrolled fires that they don't see the egress requirement as being necessary anymore. So.
But doesn't the Kramer building have sprinklers?
It does.
So there's something else going on. There's
Yeah, I think that um I would be glad to talk about that if you wanted to catch up at some point.
Well, I mean, in us making that determination that they can build higher than thirty-five feet because, you know, I was on that committee and you know, that was a big discussion.
Fighting within the fire department and a lot of um, I wouldn't say misinformation, but a lot of misunderstanding within the department about why that height was there and what our role is in rescuing people from buildings that are on fire and what that really looks like in a situation where um, where there would be a fire in a modern fire protected, well-built to current NFPA standard building versus what we are kind of more accustomed to. I think more of the senior members at that time were more accustomed to, which were buildings that were not necessarily built to that standard. And I say not necessarily, or more, more than likely not, and were oftentimes not sprinkled and didn't have multiple means of egress from common hallways. And so there was a serious disconnect there between what their personal experiences were and then what that would look like based on the actual construction that was being proposed. If that makes sense.
Yep. So we'll certainly
It was a ser- it was a serious oversight on the, or I would say oversight. It was a serious breakdown of expectations versus requirements. Be the nicest way of putting it.
Yeah, thank you. Like many things with Act forty-seven, it actually opens a window on some inadequacies of our ordinance anyway, which now look like they need to be addressed as well. Kathleen, you had a final comment before we move on to item number six on our agenda.
Thank you. And I certainly uh appreciate Adam's research and know that this will be discussed further, but to go from having a, a, a height limit of thirty-five feet to having no height limit seems, you, you have a built system, I guess I, I'm a little, I'm very concerned that Richmond would just not have a building height limit. And that's what I uh, wanted to say. Based on what Adam was saying, I think that fire protection is one aspect of it, but there are a lot of other standing related things that suggest we fire protection is one aspect of it, but there are a lot of other standing related things that suggest we should still have building heights.
Yep, and I think Adam mentioned that, you know, that there are other reasons to have your building height be at a certain restriction. And we're certainly not proposing to change it from thirty-five right now. But we just want to allow for the fact that if there is an affordable housing building, it can be a story high, one story higher by law. And so we'll have to incorporate that somehow into our
I think if I was to propose something for the, for, you know, the, the minimally impactful, I do think this is one, so you know, I want to acknowledge that we're all hypocrites in our own right, right? So before I say that, uh, to, I think that this is one situation where like a minimally impactful, uh, yeah, more restrictive approach does work because I think having fifty, sixty, eighty-foot tall buildings all over Richmond is not something we want to have happen. It's just gonna, that would, that would fundamentally change the character of the neighborhood, uh, the type of housing and all that. So I think um, what I would propose is that we, you know, obviously we keep our height restriction where it's at, and that we would address that uh, in some additional section or in the height. I, um, I think you had mentioned the um, sorry, was it uh, drawing a complete blank on the, oh, the uh, affordable housing uh, section that if you were to, if you were to use the density bonus, that obviously you would need to comply with whatever X fire protection requirements over X number of feet. I think that would be the cleanest way. I think the only drawback to that is that, you know, under thirty-five feet, I don't know if we want to go this direction and, and I'm not proposing that. I actually have some serious reservations, but there are, there are real benefits to imposing the um, fire protection requirements of buildings short than thirty-five feet. I do think that will undo a lot of the benefits of the Act forty-seven, so.
Alright, well, that's something definitely to go on our agenda for, further discussion on that, but that's a good start. So that's all the time that we have tonight to spend on Act forty-seven. I think those are the main points that I wanted to get across to the neighborhoods. And for our next meeting, or maybe the one after that, we will have a draft of the regulations that we mostly agreed upon in the discussions with the neighborhoods, but that has now incorporated these new Act forty-seven points. We will hopefully clarify the parking question um, and go from there. So I'll keep you all posted on, and we'll put those drafts up online when we have them ready. And yeah, so thanks for everybody coming who came for that discussion. So we're gonna turn now to a, another discussion ongoing that we're having, which is um, a strategy for allowing some residences to be built in the industrial commercial district, which doesn't currently allow residences, except perhaps through the PUD process. So last time we had identified three potential strategies that we were gonna think about. One was to just make the Donovan's Lot, that is the lot that's involved in the IC District. Just make that into a residential district. That was one strategy that we had thought of. A second one was to use the PUD procedure, which is currently ambiguous about whether residences are allowed. It looks like they are allowed by it, but they aren't listed as an allowed use. So that was the second thing. Keith is gonna talk about those two. And the third one was to incorporate residential uses into either a part of the ICD district or into the whole of the combined C and IC district. So, and I worked on that a little bit. So we'll start with Keith, who can talk about those first two options that we came up with.
So let's, let's uh, uh, talk about the, uh, let's just right off the bat, talk about uh, going through an HDR just for the single lot there. Um, that is, you know, uh, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, my initial reaction that that is considered spot zoning, um, as presented to our attorney, it is in fact would be considered spot zoning and would put the town in, in a litigious area. Uh, we do not want to go there. So quite frankly, that's off the table.
Can you just define what spot zoning? What does that mean, that phrase, spot zoning?
Spot zoning basically, uh, in, in, in layman's terms is, is basically uh, giving the ability for one small area of a zoning district to have totally different, a totally different use than all the other surrounding areas. So it's just a spot of, of that zoning district is, is, is unique. Um, and that uh, through, through case law, uh, does not hold, uh, uh, basically. Um, so, so that, that although it would be easy, although it would not be easy, I would put the town in a litigious uh, uh, position, which uh, we're not gonna do. Um, the second one is the PUD. Um, having conversations obviously with the bills, we did bring up the PUD aspect, the, the whole idea of what they want to do is to subdivide. Um, I would agree that it is ambiguous in the language, uh, as for, you know, what Virginia was saying. Um, having talked to Tyler and working, working through it with the zoning administrator, we feel that, that having a residential PUD in the district is allowed based on the language. Um, and, and we would most likely, and he would most likely uh, move that forward to the DRB for review, if that's in fact what people would want to do in that district. Um, and uh, uh, we, we sat down and we talked about it after we left today, uh, Virginia, uh, in, in detail, in depth. And uh, we, we went round and round like we do. Um, and then just looking at some of the language in the zoning district uh, itself or within the PUD section, um, i- it's, it's pretty clear that this is an allowable use of residential PUDs are allowed in the district. And I think that's how that would proceed. So that is an avenue that, that the bills can take. I know that initially and from the get-go, they wanted to subdivide a piece of, of uh, a part of their parcel to, to subdivide that out for, for residential use. Um, so though, I, I think those two issues are settled. Um, at this point, I think what it comes down to now is, is uh, what Virginia's gonna go into, which is the change of use or the allowable use of residential in either of those districts, either the C or the IC, or however the board wants to, the commission wants to go forward with it. Um, so let me just repeat that, that spot zoning, changing that lot to, to HDR or to just allow that one lot to have residential as spot zoning, and that's not something that, that I would move forward with to the select boards and, and per, per our attorney is, is something we should not do. Um, and uh, residential PUD use is allowed in that district per my conversation with the zoning administrator today. So that's where we're at with those two.
So Keith, can I ask you this question? In the IC District, under the conditional use approval, it says planned unit development as provided by section, in section five point twelve, if no subdivision of land is proposed. So you do not find that to be a hindrance to that strategy? Because in this case, a subdivision of land is proposed.
Correct, correct. So you, you couldn't do that. You couldn't put a PUD, a residential PUD, if you were proposing to do a subdivision.
But aren't the Donovan's proposing to do a subdivision?
That's correct, that's correct.
So.
So if they were not proposing to do a subdivision, they'd be, they'd be more with it, they'd be within their rights to do a residential PUD.
But they are proposing a subdivision, so their strategy would have to change to not involve a subdivision.
That's correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's, that, that clause at the end that you mentioned is, is what the hiccup is there.
Okay, so we could presumably change that. Right? We could remove that clause if no subdivision is proposed. If we remove that clause as an amendment to our bylaws, would that, would the zoning administrator then feel that it was able to be permitted?
I, I would, yes.
Even though, yep. So the dwelling use itself is not listed as a use, but what is listed as a use is a planned unit development.
Right.
So but if it says if no subdivision is involved, then that seems to be a problem. We would have to change that.
That is, but my, my understanding is, and, and Michelle's here or, or um, Linda's here, um, is that they want to subdivide their, their parcel in order to, to give that to their daughter.
So that's a problem, which would prevent them from utilizing this as it currently stands.
That's correct.
Okay, so thinking as planning commissioners, it would be possible presumably to amend this language to remove the clause that says if no subdivision of land is proposed, which I don't even know why it's in there, but there it is. So most planned unit developments involve subdivisions, so this seems very restrictive for a planned unit development that involves no subdivision.
Yeah, it, it's an odd clause. I mean, I'll give you that. Um, and, but it doesn't get the bills to where they want to go, regardless if it's there or not. They're, they're not planning on doing a planned unit development.
Well, but the question that we had was if it were possible for them to do this today as a planned unit development, would they take that route? I mean, Michelle, you could, where are you? There you are. I don't know if Michelle or Zachary wants to comment on that. You know, if you're, obviously, if you're determined to do this as a subdivision, then for this to be possible, we would have to amend the zoning to remove that clause. If that makes it possible, which Keith is suggesting from a zoning administration point of view, it is possible if that clause isn't there, then that is a pathway forward.
Um, hi, it's Michelle here.
Hi, Michelle.
Correct me, um, please, if I'm wrong, but doesn't a planned unit development require um, like active business underneath? And then like a home attached to it or something?
Not a resid- not a residential PUD. A residential PUD is all residential. And that is specifically stated to be allowed in the PUD section in this district.
Um, would it require multiple like housing units within it? Like, I, I guess, how is that different than following the accessory dwelling?
Uh, the size of, of the structure that you can build.
Yeah.
And, and you, and I, I know that um, your mom wants to also include other parcels, but in, in a subdivision, but if it's a PUD, it's all under one ownership. Well, how, the ownership issue is not my issue. That, that would be your issue.
Yep.
But in a PUD, you can have any number of owners, any number of buildings. So that means one is okay, because it's any number of buildings, any number of uses, different uses, any number of owners. Section five point twelve currently. So we wouldn't have to change that part of the PUD section. We wouldn't have to change the PUD section. We would only have to change in the IC District, that little clause, we would have to take it out.
Subdivision clause.
The subdivision clause, that if no subdivision is involved.
Yeah, I mean, um, that's an interesting point that I don't think we were aware kind of existed. Um, I, I mean, I certainly don't know what my mother is up to. She's always talking about you guys have been lucky enough to meet her. Um, you know, Zach and I would certainly prefer to subdivide. So we, because it does become an ownership is, issue. I know that's not um, your guys' problem whatsoever, but I think our number one goal would be to um, own the land we're building on.
Yeah, and I would say, Michelle, when we initially started talking about this, that it was brought up and it was quickly shot down because of that subdivision and ownership issue. And that's, I think, kind of why we didn't go down that path.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and then, and then we had the hiccup with the HDR, um, with it, with the neighbors. And uh, now, now we're trying to, you know, trying to suture this together for you at this point.
Yeah, no, I, we definitely recognize all the work you and Virginia and um, I know the other uh, commissioners have provided a lot of conversation. So um, you know, we're here listening and we appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Well, it definitely says in the Planned Unit Development Section five point twelve, a PUD or a residential PUD may be permitted in the IC District. So you go over to what it defined of a residential PUD, it includes only residential units. And they may include single-family, two-family, or multifamily dwellings. And there can be any number, which means one counts. So you know, whatever we do pretty much to make your project possible is going to involve amending the zoning. So amending the zoning by simply removing that one clause seems like it's in the running for being the quickest way to go. Now, given that the PUD process is a little more involved, but it's not insurmountable, the PUD process. You know, you have to have some additional features that you wouldn't otherwise have. If it was just a permitted use, you know, where you could just go to Tyler and say, we want to put up a single-family home and he could permit it. You know, you would have to go to the DRB. The master plan question is involved, but all you would have to say is this is all we have planned for right now, or you could say we have additional um, subdivisions planned, but we don't know where yet. And then when you, your parents wanted to subdivide those off, they would have to come back to the DRB again and amend their master plan. But that, all those things are possible. They're not uh, you know, game stoppers. Like the fact that it is not listed, a single-family home is not listed as a permitted use in this district. This is, seems like it would be a way to get there, don't you think, Keith? I mean, that would be the amendment that we would have to make. We would have to amend.
Removing the subdivision clause.
Right.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense to me. If you, if you don't mind me making kind of one last comment, I don't want to interrupt your meeting, but um,
Yeah, no, go right ahead.
I guess after like listening to many weeks of meetings and conversations, I get um, kind of held up and confused by the fact that something like this exists and you can allow residential in certain ways in the IC District, but we've kind of had struggles over doing the most simplest thing, which was adding residential as a, as a use. I, I just don't understand, like, i- it clearly already does exist um, by what you're telling me now. So I think I just don't quite understand why the most simplest way forward has been such a hurdle. I don't mean that just actually, and I think like, we're, to say the elephant in the room is, you know, you're saying that I could already just go and do it, but many of the other commissioners are not amendable to adding residential use when it clearly already exists, so.
Right, yep. Well, the um, the document is complex, the regulations, the wrinkles are complex. The way people feel about it are complex. So you know, this is not unusual that this kind of discussion has to happen. I'm sorry, it's taking such a long time. Keith, you want to say something? Or who was that? That was Zach saying something? Zachary saying something?
Oh, no, no, I just had the phone um, unmuted still.
Okay.
And you don't have to apologize, Virginia. We're very understanding. I just want to call attention, uh, the elephant in the room.
Yes, yes. We, we understand that and are just trying to work with what we've got in front of us in terms of the rules and fix them. So it's not a problem, the common sense solution. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Keith?
No, I thought, I think we've uh, uh, gone down this, the, the road as far as we're gonna go down on, on PUDs, spot zoning. And, and now the conversation does need to turn to the use, which, which is coming full circle to what Michelle just said.
Yep. So the other option besides this PUD route is to add dwellings as a use. Either in just the IC district. Or in just this section of the IC district. Or in a combined C and IC district. So that also requires amending the zoning, but the PUD thing requires amending the zoning. So there's going to have to be an amendment somewhere for it to work out. We're going to have to make an amendment. We're just trying to determine what the best one is. It is possible to add dwelling, single family dwelling duplex, dwelling multifamily. To either this portion, the northern portion of the IC district, or to the whole IC district. Or like I said, to a combined C and IC district. Which. I favor because it doesn't seem to make any sense that these are two separate districts. All of the uses except for three questionable uses that are permitted. In the IC district are permitted in the commercial district which surrounds it. You have Jay Hutchins in the IC district, you have Milton Cat in the C district. Why is that? It doesn't seem to make any sense. However, if to. Update, you know, one of the goals of the planning commission is to update this entire document. If updating that whole section is too cumbersome right now, I'm willing to just put the dwelling units as an allowed use. Into the IC district. Or into the northern section of the IC district. But it, that doesn't seem to make sense either. I don't want to make our ordinance as irrational. As it already is. I would like to make it a little more rational by cleaning up these problems. So. Do we have heard commissioners, well, Mark in particular, who has not wanted to add dwellings into this district. It's called an IC district. There's no industrial uses here. It is not a suitable place for industrial uses. I don't really understand the resistance to allowing dwellings in this district. I don't know if anybody else would like to address this. Allison, Adam, Mark, you want to talk about it?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it.
Yep.
Basically, what you're talking about doing is combining the IC and C districts since they're. Um. Basically, no real industrial development per se exists currently in the industrial commercial and therefore combining it to the commercial.
Yeah.
Turning all of our, all of our. I'm going to use the word industrial, but I guess business districts, I guess. Turning all of our business districts into one unified business district. And then allow residential use in that district on top of combining that. And the problem with that is that then all of our commercial district can just go to commerce, go to residential. And, and goodbye all commercial district. Um, it's, it's just gone because basically it's just really residential. Um, and, and there's lots of opportunity to do that, I suppose. I just don't think that the town as a whole. Would want to just get rid of all resi, all commercial. Zoning and just basically have, you know, one great big bedroom community. I just don't think it is. And the only place, the best place where commercial makes sense is, is near the Interstate Exchange. So that's, that's why I'm against it. Now, the, the industrial commercial, honestly, I think that. It's a typographical error in the PUD district that even lists industrial commercial as a residential PUD. You know, that's a, that's a lucky break for, for the Beals and the Donovan's. But I don't think that that was an intended use. I think that was just some sort of typo that got left in there.
Well, it's also in the commercial district that a residential PUD is also allowed in the commercial district and in the gateway. And on all the commercial districts, you could theoretically. Change all of them to fully residential as you're suggesting by use of the PUD as it currently is written. So.
Commercial allows residential?
Yes, Section 512. It says. A PUD or residential PUD may be permitted in the village residential commercial. The gateway residential commercial, the village commercial, the commercial, or the IC district.
Is that 512.2?
Is that, yeah, 5.12.2, general conditions A. And then it goes on to say a residential PUD may be permitted also in the AR and the HDR. So basically, it's pretty much all of the districts except for the. The village downtown and the Jolena Court District don't allow residential only. They allow PUDs, which can be mixed. But all the other districts, all the commercial districts allow residential PUDs.
I'm not sure I'm reading that the way you're reading that because I read the second line. Of Section A as saying a PUD or residential PUD may be permitted in the RC, which is the residential commercial. The gateway, the VC, village commercial, or IC districts, industrial. Doesn't actually list commercial independent.
That's the old. Version. Anything that just has RC?
Effective 23rd, 2022.
Right.
Well, my copy says may be permitted in the VRC and the GRC. The VC, the C, or the IC. What does your copy say, Keith?
That's the same. It's the June 26, 2023 updated. Version.
June 26, 2023, we changed this three months ago?
Yeah, when we added, you know, when the select board approved. We had to go through and change the RC designation, wherever it existed, to VRC. And we had to change the gateway to GRC. That was part of adopting those RC districts.
And then we added commercial district to the. Second sentence in, in A? I don't remember that. I remember that was, we had to change those two designations. But I don't remember. Anybody talking about adding commercial to the PUD section. But you're telling me that you, the version that's on the website. From May 23, 2022? I guess that needs to be updated, huh?
It's updated. It's updated to June 26, 2023.
I don't know where I found that, in the Richmond Town website, but I'd search for ma, uh. Zoning regulations and this is the one that came up.
Oh, okay, we need to update that then on zoning regulations. It should, it's, I mean, this is off the website.
It's been updated. It's been updated on the, on the planning and zoning and it's been updated. I mean, Mark, give me a buzz tomorrow or shoot me a link or something because I pretty much scrubbed that back in June.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll paste you the, the link to this.
Yeah.
Right now, but that's not answering, helping me out with my questions. And I don't remember, you know. Doing anything with the commercial district when we talked about it in June. So when did that change take place between 2022 and? Today. Where we added commercial to that list of districts.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Yep, no, I can't answer that either. I feel it was in there, but.
Kind of disconcerting then, isn't it?
Well, does it concern you that it's allowed in the IC? And if in fact not in the C? That doesn't seem like a weird.
Doesn't seem logical, but it doesn't, to my point earlier was that. Um, a residential PUD seems like an outlier in the industrial commercial. It seems like that would be a weird place to have a residential PUD identified. And that's why I thought it was a typo. And so rather than fixing the, uh, going through the process of removing that illogical entry of. IC district allowing residential PUDs, we have. Somehow magically converted, added commercial to the residential PUD.
Does your version have the village commercial listed there?
My, it does.
Okay, so.
Residential commercial, gateway.
What's the difference between the village commercial being replaced with PUD residences?
Well, the, the village commercial still does. It still has that. And it almost makes sense that the village commercial would because the village commercial is right down in the heart of residential areas. The IC district. And neither is the commercial district. They're really in a residential district. So it doesn't make sense that the IC district would be identified as a residential PUD. And whenever that got entered in, I suppose we could do archival search of every version and find out. Where that entered, but I would be surprised that, it doesn't make sense that that would be an intentional.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Unless it was done strictly in response to the people on, uh, on, uh, what Rogers Lane. And, and then it was added there because there were residences on. Rogers Lane, which is in the industrial commercial, but it certainly doesn't make sense to have the commercial district.
Well, the commercial district has also got residences in it. So if that's the rationale. Then it applies equally to the commercial district.
Well, my rationale is I don't understand how a zoning regu, our zoning regulations in May 23 of 2022. Don't list commercial. Districts in that sentence, and now it does. That's what I don't understand.
Okay, well, you know, we can look into that, but it isn't strictly relevant, so maybe.
It kind of is, but I guess my real ultimate point is, is that. The IC and commercial districts are intended to basically be. Commercial business districts. That's the, that's the, the primary use of them. We didn't change.
With all due respect, Mark, it's 50% residential already, so kind of got to get over it.
That's not the point. The point is, is that we don't have residential use even listed as a, as a use in those two districts.
Because it was residential before all of these businesses were there.
I, I, I do understand.
I mean, open your eyes, like you could have come to the land when we offered to tour it with everybody. That land is unusable.
I know that land very well, Michelle. I, I.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I've dri, I've driven Rogers Lane on multiple occasions. I've been.
So what business are you going to put back there?
I, it's not my point. It's not my point is, my point is that you guys want to convert every district in every. Good location for resident, for commercial development. You want to change it all to residential.
I don't. They're not suggesting that they change it all to residential. They're just changing.
When you're talking about adding residential uses to those two districts, then you certainly are.
It just seems like the simplest way forward. We could not subdivide and still put a house back there. We're just trying to do it in an understandable like way.
All right.
Okay, so I got your point, Mark. How about Allison or Adam? Could you want to weigh in on this? We only have a couple of minutes before we need to adjourn. But I'd like to hear some other comments about this. We understand where you're coming from, Mark. Thank you. Anybody? Adam, Allison?
I guess the part that. Uh, to me was Michelle's last point, that, that land is like, that land is not conducive to a. Commercial use in many ways, and so. Uh, barring, exploring the PUD option. It seems like some way of removing the steep hilly portions from the district as written and allowing residential. I mean, I don't know. Yes, that opens this up to creating a whole other RC district that we're adding to an existing RC district, so. Yeah, it seems to me that the, the delineating factor seems to be the flat low lying, easy to. Commercially or industrially developed lands versus the hilly, uh, more residentially easy to develop land, so. I don't know where we go with that.
Okay, great. Allison, do you have anything that you want to add to this conversation?
I'm afraid I don't have any pearls of wisdom about this one. It's kind of like a no win position either way. And I, I'd like to, I, actually, what I'd like to do is come down and walk around and take a really good look at it, which I haven't had a chance to do, so. Guess I can't help you right now.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
All right, so I think we're going to have to leave it there for the moment. We'll have to hear from our other two commissioners to see what they think. It seems like. Letting people, letting the market decide what is going to be feasible. We certainly don't want industrial, actual industrial uses there because of there are already so many residences. And it's right next door to a giant residential neighborhood of Ruvee Commons, so it's not a suitable place to have industrial. Having it as a commercial district and setting parameters for screening between residential and commercial uses. Seems like it would be allowing people to do what the market is dictating with their property. Um, so anyway, I guess we'll have to work a little bit. More on this and maybe look at the PUD process and see if that works. But if the PUD process works for the Donovan's, then it essentially would also allow, if the market dictated. For residences to be anywhere in the commercial district or the residential. Anyway. So. For next time, let's, I want to see if we can get the neighborhoods mocked up, a draft for the neighborhoods. We seem to have had people from the neighborhoods here today. So understanding that these are things that we have to be putting in, we'll try to get the parking question resolved. And the affordable housing, greater height piece could be, a draft could be made of that. The definitions that we were going to talk about, they're written in the memo, so look at the memo. And see if there's anything that you don't like about those definitions. I think we could add the part about the winter being public parking has to be in the winter. I don't know that that's going to help us actually achieve more parking. We could add greater lot coverage to the districts. If that doesn't help with stormwater, that's kind of a problem, but it might allow for more parking if we allowed there to be greater lot coverage. So all of those are things that you can think about and we'll look at those drafts next time. Any, Keith, you have anything else we need to know about? Any other business?
No, I think we're in pretty good shape right now. It looks to me that we're going to be mocking up the, the north and south. That's basically my shorthand for that. Um, and we need to come to some resolution, obviously, on, on the bills. Uh, but I, we definitely have our marching orders as far as getting some, some drafts out. On north and south and that move that forward. I, I think that's, uh. I know this is wonky, but that's kind of exciting.
Yes, well, forward motion is helpful, you know. We've got a lot of this document to go. That we need to update with these continuous ambiguities that arise when we're. Trying to do anything with it, so.
And, and get it out for public consumption. I mean, we, we need to have those workshops and we need to, we need to get out and get the word out for sure. And, you know, the summer's not over. It's not over until. And, you know, the summer's not over. It's not over until, you know, mid September or late September. So, you know, I think after that, I think things will start to move pretty quickly. That's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn if there's no other business?
I'll be sending that link shortly. But I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, anybody would like to second that motion?
Got a second.
Adam seconds the motion, Mark makes the motion. All in favor should say aye. Aye, aye. Sounds like everybody. So we stand adjourned and we'll see you all at our next meeting, which would be on the twentieth of September. Thank you all. And maybe we'll have Joy and Chris next time and they can have some opinions as well. So, bye. Thank you, Michelle, for hanging in there.